Discover over 100 episodes of Bartholomew Town on Spotify or wherever you get your podcasts.
This is the Bartholomew Town Podcast.
Yeah, so actually it's good to talk about what the role is and what is no. So I'm the president of the city council and I my colleagues elect me to represent them in the city and to help in the coordination of the staffing and also setting the priority for the for the city council. But I'm not the city council boss, you know?
I think it's not the role of the parents to go and clean the schools. I think we have a contract with a vendor that is responsible for Aramark. Aramark for maintaining the the schools.
Welcome into another edition of the Bartholomew Town Podcast. I'm your host, Bill Bartholomew. On today's episode, I sit down with Providence City Council President Sabina Matos. And as you might expect, a lot of dialogue with the council president about the ongoing Providence Public School situation, specifically the fallout from the Johns Hopkins report earlier this summer and now the state intervention well underway. So lots to discuss around that matter with the council president also interested in her perspective, of course. This is not a new development that Providence Public Schools are in rough shape on a multitude of levels. So we do a deep dive on this matter. I mean, you really have to. It's a it's a major story and it's not just a Providence story. I mean, this is a statewide issue when it comes to education, both on the infrastructure side. And then also on what I've been kind of describing as the content side, really the curriculum, the personnel, the strategy, the end game, all of that. So we try to break that down with the council president and also take a look at the structure of power in Providence from her vantage point. What powers does she have as the president of the city council? Really, what does that mean? Is it more of an organizational role or is it, you know, sort of a counterbalance to the mayor? We break all that down and a lot more with Sabina Matos in just a matter of moments. Support for Bartholomew Town comes from Lagunitas Brewing Company, helping to present Elmwood Songwriters Club, a recurring performance series featuring intimate sets by Rhode Island artists from a variety of communities held at the Bartholomew Town Loft in the Elmwood neighborhood of Providence. And you can support the pod by subscribing, rating and reviewing wherever you're listening right now. Okay, without further ado, my conversation right here at the loft with Providence City Council President Sabina Matos. Good to catch up following our PVD Fest conversation.
Thank you, Bill. I'm so glad to be here.
We are fully involved in the Providence schools crisis, as the media will call it. I mean, it's really just the Providence schools, the way it's been for a while. The crisis is a reflection of the Johns Hopkins report and just sort of an outpouring of information about what's been going on in the Providence Public Schools for some time. What's your 36,000 foot reaction to the report and the follow up and everything that's going on in that that broad category now?
Well, the report actually had information in there and one of those individuals says it's not that I didn't know about it. Like I heard many, many stories already about what was happening in the school. I heard complaint from individuals that work in the school system, from parents and their experience. So I have heard about what was going on in there. I think what when you see the report and you have all that information collected in one place, that's what is shocking to everyone, I think, to have all of it in one place and going from one issue to the next and one issue to the next. So you can say, that's why some individuals says like, I didn't know it was that bad. It's like, once you have everything together and to see the magnitude of the problem, that's part is the part that was shocking. I I appreciate going through the different forums and listening to the feedback that they mainly parents and some of the educators had. I was able to attend most of them. I missed only one of them.
Wow.
And I have to tell you, the this the stories that you heard from parents, especially when it comes to parents or kids with a special need, you know, that that was really tough to to sit there and listen to. But now I think that I have said this before, I don't think we can go any lower than where we are right now. So the the good thing about us that the only way to go is up, right from here. I think this is the base that we have right now and to look at where we where we are, all the issues that we have and figure out how we improve. And having the state coming in is something that I think is going to help us because we are at a point in which we cannot continue the status quo and continue to do it doing the same thing over and over to get the same results. And I have to say that the problems has been getting worse and worse, but this is not a new issue. I have, I didn't go to school here in the United States. I went to school in the Dominican Republic. So I didn't get to experience elementary, middle school, high school here. I only went to college here in the United States. But one thing that I always remember is speaking with some of my friends that did go to the public system here in Providence is the lack of expectation that they could be successful and that they can, they can go to college. Like I one of my good friends, she was told that she was not college material. And she has a master's degree right now, very successful individual. And during the forums, I heard the same thing. I remember a parent that got up and speaking about how her daughter was told by her advisor that she was not a college material. And and that is breaks your heart.
That is outrageous, right?
Yes.
Oh, my God.
But it's something that has been happening for quite a long time and it still continues to happen. So there's some problems in there that we need to look at this as an opportunity to rebuild and to make changes, systematic changes that we need.
Do you feel those changes go well beyond this notion that we're going to repair the infrastructure of the schools? It goes well beyond just, you know, changing teaching habits or pushing out bad teachers or administrators? This is just like a fundamental rethinking of how we've got to educate kids? This is a big question, right? Way more than.
And that's what that's what I what I see that is going to happen and that's what I hope is going to happen. Because we need to look at everything that needs to change. The physical appearance of the buildings have to improve. We cannot continue to have our kids in an atmosphere that doesn't show that we care, you know? That I that is, we have to improve the way how our buildings look in the and make sure that they're safe for other students, for our, for the students, for the for the teachers and administrator that works on those buildings. So we have to make sure that they're safe. We also have to make sure that we are addressing the challenges with some of the staff and the teaching staff. In going through the forums, I heard several of the teachers that spoke out saying that they want change because they have been suffering the consequences of having a colleague that is not doing it, is not doing his or her job. So they are suffering those consequences. I have heard stories about students that were supposed to be getting special education support and they were not getting it. And the teachers that have the students in their classroom has been suffering for that. They think about what's going to happen for the the teacher that's going to have those students the next year when the students spend a whole year without getting the support that they needed to help them be at the same level, the same part with their peers. So the teachers want change. I heard that from several of them that spoke, they want change. So we have to make sure that we're working with them to be able to to change the changes that we have to do when it comes to the teaching system.
What about community relations as well? I mean, obviously the community, as you mentioned, you've heard from them at those forums. The forums we're speaking of are the Commissioner, Commissioner Infante Green's tour, if you will, that occurred in mostly at the beginning of July, a listening tour.
Yes.
What about the all in, as they're calling it, the mayor's office, the cleanup? The notion that the community should get their hands dirty, that the that not only do you need to list all stakeholders, you know, where when you define stakeholders, the community is a member is is our stakeholders, but also that they have a responsibility to kind of get involved, get dirty and and make this repair? Does that misplace some of the blame? Is it or is it just the right direction to go, really going back to almost like the 1600s when we built the first school?
I think it's not the role of the parents to go and clean the schools. I think we have a contract with a vendor that is responsible for
Aramark.
Aramark for maintaining the the schools. I I think this should be a role for parents to volunteer and to be active in their school. Honestly, we need that a lot to have parents to be active voices, participate in, helping in projects with the school. But to put the responsibility of cleaning the buildings and making sure that the buildings are clean and safe for the students, it should not be put on the parents. So I have a, I have trouble with the way how we're handling this cleanup. Especially just last week, I went to an event that was took place at the Nathaniel Green School where we have 200 volunteers from Fidelity Investment that were there to help improve the school. They have specific projects that they were going to do. I'm really concerned about how are we going to manage this all in cleanup that we're going to have for the school? And if we really understand what would it take? For those 200 volunteers, once they have been doing this for 10 years, this in, so this was the 10th year that they were doing this project. They have done it before at a different school. They used to be at Roger Williams Middle School. But what happens is they run out of small, quote unquote, small projects that they could do in one day at the Roger Williams, so they look into other locations. But what it took for them to have that one day of work is they coordinated with a nonprofit out of New Jersey that coordinates, comes to the school the week before, make sure to have all the work ready, all the supplies ready to go. So I'm a little bit hesitant because I'm not sure that we have the capacity to organize this to that level. And that's what it takes in order to have a successful cleanup or data community service for the school. So I'm not 100% sure we're ready for that type of project.
We'll find out on August 23rd and August 24th, I suppose, coming right up. All right, let's zoom out of schools because we could do, really, there could be an entire podcast. You could just turn the Providence Journal into a daily report on the schools if you wanted to. Do a countdown like they're doing on Tara Grantian Show there and just like, here we go.
Yeah.
But let's zoom out, let's talk generally speaking. You're the Providence Council President. That's a it's a high profile role, no doubt about it. You have the ability to set priorities. What are some of the priorities that you, you know, in your mind, from from your perspective for Providence now and going forward? Is housing, what where does that lie and what are you doing to make them happen?
So actually, it's good to talk about what the role is and what is no. So I'm the president of the city council and I my colleagues elect me to represent them in the city and to help in the coordination of the staffing and also setting the priority for the for the city council. But I'm not the city council boss, you know? And that is something important that people needs to understand because in my job, I have to build consensus. I have to work with everyone in the city council to make the case about why we're going in this direction and to help get all the council members to understand the importance of, let's say, this is obvious, but just saying, okay, we have to prioritize the schools right now because this is that was going on. So we I have to build consensus and make sure that everyone understands why and why this is important for the city and for the city council. Some of the priorities that we have set from the beginning that we wanted to work, obviously a school is a huge priority more than ever, but housing, this is a city council that we are very concerned with the lack of affordable housing right now in the city of Providence. We always have individuals reaching out to us from our community constituents that are looking for affordable housing and they cannot find it. So housing is a big topic for us. The other thing we're concerned with is with economic development at a different level. It's not just the economic development of of downtown and the 195.
Wexford, etc.
Those are important, but we cannot forget about economic development in the neighborhoods. Because most of the time, those are the ones that are going to be hiring people that work in the neighborhood. So we're trying to make sure that we are looking for ways to incentivize and help assist any small business that we already have in our community, how to help them to move to a scale. One of the things that I've been talking about is about the the Preservation Society had their annual meeting. I think it was about three or four years ago in Oniville. In, once they were at the building of the Cathedral of the Cathedral Life or the King's Cathedral is the new name of the church. They had Majora Carter that came from New York. And I always remember when she spoke, she said something that stuck with me and I'm trying to work on this as as our vision. She said that we have to make sure that we self gentrify. Because for many of us, we think about success is for our kids to do well and move out of the neighborhood. But she questioned asked to the public, why do we, does the neighborhood have to improve for someone else? Why can't we improve the neighborhood and our kids can be successful here? So I've been having that as a vision for what I want to accomplish. And also I have been trying to apply this with small businesses in the neighborhood. Like a good example is, and this is a good example of tin work. What happened with the Family Cake, which is a small business in my community? We, the city, the administration, the city council, the state commerce corporation, everyone worked together to get them to have this new space. This is a very successful family business that was being run out of their apartment, you know? And we were able to find a location for them in a main street in 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 the neighborhood. And they are continued to grow and they're overgrowing the space that they are on right now. And like that, there's more, more example of businesses in the neighborhoods that we can help grow and and take up to scale.
Yeah, Providence is full of ideas, full of small businesses. And in theory, it's about just making them, you know, into realities, I guess, and taking them to, as you say, to scale. That's certainly a key to the future. What about public transportation? We got the jump bikes now, 18 bucks a ride or whatever it is, I don't know. That's that's a misstatement. I'm sure it's not that, but but it's maybe it's 18 an hour. It's it's very expensive in, you know, from from my vantage point anyway, for for the average person to want to utilize it. So how can we get past that and and expand public transportation, expand bike options and just make the city more navigable without being in a car?
Yeah, so I'm, I believe that the the jump bike are too expensive right now. They're started at a lower rate and they were more accessible. We're having several issues with them right now in the neighborhood. I have gotten pictures from some of constituents and one of them was paying over, you know? We find them in the river. So there's a lot of issues with with that program that we need to address. But when it comes to transportation in this city of Providence, we need to work closer with Ripta to make sure that we can add different connections and different routes to the transportation services that they provide. It's really hard right now because if you're in Oniville and you want to go to South Providence, the only way to do it is you have to come from Oniville to downtown to take another bus to go to South Providence. That is not the best way for a public transportation. At this, at this point, we should have different type of transportation, more connections that it doesn't make it that everyone have to come to downtown in order to go to a different direction of the city. So that is something we have to continue to work with Ripta. In my neighborhood, especially right now, we are being the pilot program for the autonomous driving.
Little roadie?
The little roadie. So it's been a good addition because we don't have transportation that take us from Oniville to the train station, right? So it's that right now that the little roadie is serving that need. And and this is what we got to think about, what other type of transportation we have to add. I don't think that bicycles are the solution that are going to stay solve everything for us. I think the bicycles are part of the solutions. Because thinking myself, like not everyone is going to bike in, I'm a good example. I have to be running from one event to the other. I have relatively small kids, so the bike doesn't work for me. And we have to be aware of that. At the same time, also, we have to remember that in order to add more like more bike lane, we have to be aware of how we're going to be affecting the small businesses in the neighborhoods that have been relying on the on-street parking. So we have to take that into account and make sure that we're balancing things well before we make a decision to add bike lane in a one of the main roads in in our city. So the bicycles is going to be part of the solution, but it's not going to be the solution for the transportation issues here in Providence.
You touch on Ripta, what's the relationship like between the city and Ripta right now when it comes to Kennedy Plaza? When it comes to all these discussions? Is it good, thriving? Is it good communication in general basis?
Good communication with Ripta and with the city planning department all along. When it comes to the city council, I have a really good relationship with Scott Abadisha. And we had an initial meeting when I got elected to the city council. And we're building on that to find ways in which we collaborate more and would work together more.
That's great to hear because, you know, as I think Providence, you know, public transportation is it's obviously not the top of the list, it can't be the priority. But in terms of a 20 year plan, I mean, you've got to be thinking, totally reinventing what we've got going on here. You're totally right, the bus routes, the 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 idea of having to go to a hub, one hub and that's downtown.
Downtown.
Is it's not modern in any sense.
No.
It doesn't work.
It doesn't work. It doesn't work. And even if you had students, let's say, that would have to come from the west part of the city to go to the JSEC school, they still have to go to downtown to be able to go to JSEC. So we have to find a different way.
Right, and never mind public transportation throughout the state, you know, by a lot of routes in Newport and in South County as well. And I mean, just the idea of take, I know a few people who do travel. Few of us moved up together from Brooklyn when we were living down there. So I have a few converted Rhode Islanders. That's the hardest thing for them. No one had a car their whole life, their whole life. They were able to take trains, buses conveniently. They moved here and they're stuck.
Yes.
They need to get a car and it changes the dynamics of everything that they were used to. And they don't want the car necessarily. They were happier without it. So it's it's something to look for in the future. Last couple of minutes here, your backstory, Dominican, to where did you study and where did you go to college?
So I I grew up, I was raised in the Dominican Republic. I came here when I was 20 years old and I didn't know the language. So actually, I had, I came to take English classes very closely at the International Institute.
Oh, right here at Dorcas?
Yep.
Yeah.
At that time was just International Institute before they emerged. And from there, I transferred to CCRI, whatever, took some more English classes and eventually transferred to Rhode Island College. I transferred to Rhode Island College and at that time, I was not sure about what I wanted to have my career on. And it just go back, I think, to even my childhood. Every time my dad used to ask me and my sister, where are you going to be when you grow up? My sister could always say something, but most of the time, what I would say is I want to do everything. So I think the closest way to do it, everything that I could accomplish was going into public relations was my my the mayor. It actually, I went into communication and it's really hard thinking back, why did I want to make my life so difficult? Because I wasn't still learning English to go into communication. But when I spoke, I spoke to my advisor and she told me about public relation. I was like, huh, yes, because I like working with people. That's something that I think I could do that I would enjoy. So that's how I end up going to communications while learning the English language. So I, as part of the requirement, I needed to volunteer to do an internship with a for communication. I started doing an internship in a local Spanish radio station.
Which one?
Poder, 1110. And it's, people don't believe this, but I'm, I'm normally very shy. And when I was going to, when I was going to school, I was the same way. So I just used to go take my classes, go back home. I was, I wanted to, I was concerned about going to a radio station or a media place that was everything in English. I thought like I was not ready for that. So I wanted to have something that in which I could speak Spanish on the meantime while I felt more comfortable. So I went to the Spanish radio station. They gave me the opportunity to do the internship there. After the internship, I stayed at working with them, doing sales. And I used to volunteer for them doing a lot of community relations event. And then I connected with some of my friends like Melba de Pino, who used to be at the Rhode Island Latino Política Action Committee. And that's how I started to get involved with politics, volunteering in campaign.
Through RALPAC, just that that was the wound up, the wound up toy of your political career, so to speak.
I was part, actually, I was in the first class of the Latina Leadership Institute, which has been an amazing program for us here to help more Latinas to get involved in our community and and to run for office. Sandra Cano is a graduate. We have also Maria Rivera is also a graduate. Karen Alsalte is a graduate. So we have several elected officials that were part of the Latina Leadership Institute.
Where can people find out about that online?
It's in the website of the Rhode Island Latino PAC. They have a link to the Latino Civic Fund and there you have the information, yes. It's a great program.
Providence, it's a beautiful mystery, you know?
It is.
Trying to crack, crack it, trying to solve this problem, you know? I asked Madeline List, is Providence a city in crisis or an emerging city? You know, and she, from Madeline List, Providence Journal, Providence beat reporter. And her answer was, you know, it really just depends on who you ask. It's both. And it's that's that's exciting and scary, but you know, as you're the council president, so must be an interesting ride.
Yes, and actually, I always say this because when you go outside of Rhode Island and for a conference or and you meet individuals from other regions, I'm thinking not on a political conference, but a conference from my daytime job because the council members, we need to have another job. This is just a part time.
Oh, really?
So normally individuals are surprised to know that we have access to our elected officials, especially to the federal delegation. That doesn't happen for individuals in other areas. They can go their whole life without getting to know their governor or their senator or who's there representing in the the congressman. So here in Rhode Island, we don't appreciate enough the advantage that we have. Because you may have an idea of something and you have, you may run into the senator at the supermarket and say, hey, Senator, I was thinking about this. So there are many individuals that don't have that opportunity that we have. So we should be more appreciative of the advantage of having one or two degrees of separation.
I completely agree. It's it's a, you know, there's nothing like it that you can think of, just maybe on the county level in Florida or something like that. I know there's some sheriff here. You, I've literally seen Jack Reed, Congressman Senator Reed, Congressman Cicilline in locations that I was going to for my own entertainment, whether it's a restaurant or a venue, whatever it may be. And then you just have to ask yourself the question, do I want to bother this person right now while they're enjoying their life? But the reality is you can access their offices. They're very responsive on the congressional level and and also at the the local level. So it's helpful.
Yes.
President, Council President Sabina Matos, thanks so much for your time today. Appreciate it. Great to catch up again.
Thank you so much, Bill. Thank you for the opportunity and looking forward for the next time.
Likewise. Providence schools hopefully will have, be in a new spot then. Providence Schools hopefully will have, be in a new spot then. Thanks for listening to another episode of the Bartholomew Town Podcast. I'll be back on Tuesday with a brand new episode. Until then, I'm Bill Bartholomew. We'll talk soon.